And hello again from WJ Live powered by the Western Journal. I'm Josh Manning, Deputy Managing Editor for Assignment at the Western Journal. Joining me today Tara Snyder, a some sort of an editor with us, I think, I'm 99% sure, and Grant Atkinson, who I think is a writer, yeah, more or less, more or less. It's a terrible introduction because they're both on my team. But anyway, we're glad to have you here today. Thanks for tuning in on this Wednesday afternoon. Lots of stuff going on in the world. We have seen at Western, we've seen our numbers tick up over the last few days. Because when it turns out, when news happens, it turns out news sites are able to cover it. We're able to get interesting, interesting coverage and interesting stories to you. And that is what we are all about presenting a Christian conservative perspective on news and politics in a day when just about no one else does that. So we've got three, as usual, format of the show, we've got three topics to talk with you about. We will be talking about Alec Baldwin and the accidental onset shooting. That has gotten a lot of play in the media. There's been some decent coverage, some not so good coverage of it. We're going to be talking about some things that Baldwin said ahead of time that really make him look just absolutely horrible in the in the aftermath of the shooting. Some of this has been covered. Some of this, I think, will be very new to you. You'll want to stay tuned for that. We're also going to be talking about the supposed hitman hired to go after Matt Gaetz. We've got background on that now, and we it looks like we know who did it. Tara is going to be talking with us about that. But first off, Grant is here with news on Loudoun County. They had a school board meeting last night. New footage has come out, and we can see what parents are calling them out more and more. There's actually a very interesting discussion that took place with names being dropped and all sorts of other things. So Grant, take it away on that.
Yeah, so we've been covering this Loudoun County story a lot. Basically, for those who may not know what's going on, the general idea is that there is a student in the Loudoun County school system who is a male. He believes that he is a woman. And so they have allowed this student to begin going into the women's bathroom, as they do in blue places where they believe that people can change their gender. And so this person in May unfortunately raped a woman at school or a girl. I believe she was underage at school. And so he was moved. Their response to him raping someone was we'll just move him to another school. So he was moved to this other school, also in Loudoun County, but just a different school in the district. And that happened in May. He was convicted of all those charges. And then he goes to his other school in October, I believe October 6. Yes, October 6, it happens again. He rapes another person in the bathroom of this other school.
Was this a woman as well?
Yes.
Or female?
Yes, he was in the female bathroom, and he raped a female. So obviously, that's horrible. We've been covering it a lot. We've been writing a lot of stories about school board meetings. But there was a meeting last night where some parents spoke out directly to the superintendent. His name is Scott Ziegler, the superintendent of Loudoun County Schools. And I just want to read a couple of quotes from from those parents who spoke last night. The first quote is from Hidalgo Myers. She is a president of the Loudoun County GOP Women's Club. And she said, quote, "You are so concerned with pushing race and gender that you sacrificed our children. A girl was sexually assaulted in May, and you all knew about it. The predator was put back in schools to sexually assault another girl. You all should be fired." And another woman named Amanda Shalit said, quote, "LCPS protects rapists. I call for immediate resignations of Dr. Ziegler and any of you that had any knowledge of the rape this spring." So I think that all all three of us on set here would agree that those resignations should happen. So I don't want to ask, do you think that those people should resign? Because I think we're all in alignment on that. What I would like to hear is, do you think that these people will resign or be removed from their positions? Or are they going to be protected?
Well, I really don't think that they're going to resign, because at this point, I think they're going to fall on their sword and say, hey, what we did is make the correct decision here. We were being charitable by sending this boy to another school to live out his fantasy fairy tale land. And they're going to claim that that's charitable despite entertaining his own fantasy that he really is a girl. And so I don't think that they're going to end up resigning, because at that point, then they would have to admit that they make them they made a mistake. And as we know, the left can never admit that they've ever made a mistake. And so I think it's just going to keep going and progressing. And I know that that one school board member left last week. And so she she's probably counting her lucky stars that she left last week. I mean, it's just a nightmare. And talking too about what's going on at the schools and walkouts, a bunch of students at the surrounding area high schools also walked out yesterday. And so I think that these people are realizing, oh, my gosh, it's not just these crazy parents who we've gotten FBI involved with. These are our students who are also retaliating against us.
Do you think so Tara, do you think they will not resign because they want to essentially take a moral stand and say, oh, no, we did the right thing. We're not going anywhere. You guys are a bunch of bigots. You're hate filled. You know, get out of here.
I would I would think so, because at this point, I feel like this has been going on for months, you know, Matt Walsh went there, rented a house there. This has been a media firestorm. It's been this hot pocket within American society. And so I don't know how this is going to make any difference, because if you're putting the pressure on someone that significantly, and they still won't resign at this point, I think that their only strategy at this point is to really, as I said before, is fall on their sword and say, no, we made the right decision. We weren't being bigoted, but we're also not responsible for that young man's actions.
That's interesting. I don't know what they're going to do, Grant. I tend to think that the pressure is going to get so high that almost no one will be able to stand up under it. I mean, it would take someone of Clintonian proportions to be able to stand up under that much pressure and that much evidence of wrongdoing. Or that's what it sounds like, anyway.
Yeah.
So I they are going to have to be unbelievably strong or diluted people to do it. I don't know how strong they are. They are probably somewhat diluted based on based on what we've seen. But I mean, for the folks who are watching, this is emblematic of what's going on in other parts of the country. Now, some good, a lot of good is coming out of this, because we're seeing, we're seeing kind of what the liberal and into leftist education establishment really looks like. They're straight up telling us, just like the National School Board Association did. And how we've now seen, I think it was Ohio and Mississippi, and now I don't know if any others have have sort of rejected them. Those school boards have said, you know, we're finished with you guys. So the mask is coming off. The scary thing here is that this is probably the tip of the iceberg. There's probably so much more of this going on. So we don't know how bad it is across the rest of the country. And as more comes out, what are everyday Americans going to think about this? I mean, you've got the Washington Post out there running interference for these guys. And the Post straight up saying, and the I think it was in the perspective section, do parents have a say in their children's education? Or should they have a say in their children's education? And then the Post answers it in the headline, no, they shouldn't. I mean, this is absolutely nuts. This is this is the administrative state run amok.
It's interesting that you bring that up, because that's the next question I wanted to ask you guys is, there's a gubernatorial election coming up in Virginia. Terry McAuliffe, who's been the governor before, is going to run again. He thinks that he's going to win again. But the polls are saying that it's it's pretty much a dead heat right now. And I think that a lot of the gains that the Republican challenger Glenn Youngkin has been making has been because of this sort of thing happening in schools, because we're seeing what these policies do to everyday Americans. I was talking to Joey, another assignment editor in the office earlier today, and he was
That's what y'all's titles are. Assignment editor. Sorry, keep going.
And he was saying that he thinks this could be a huge shift, not just for Virginia voters, but also for voters around the country, because one of the biggest demographics that Trump failed to really gain a lot of ground with in 2020 was suburban white, mostly.
Soccer moms, what we used to call soccer.
Pretty much soccer moms. And if there's one issue that they're concerned about, it's their children and the way that their children are being treated in schools. And so I don't know if you guys, I'm curious if you agree with that. I feel like it could be kind of an important shift in the landscape of the elections, both for Virginia and nationally coming up on 2022.
Yeah, I think that the it'll be the revenge of the suburban soccer mom in 2024, really, because they're seeing what's going on with their kids. They're seeing what's happening when they're providing for their families. We're seeing these huge supply chain shortages. We're seeing what's going on in Afghanistan. We're seeing all of these broad issues. And I think that the main issue in 2020 was that women were looking at Trump and going, hey, I don't see him as really the presidential Kennedy like figure that we kind of are normally seeing with presidents. And I think I think at that level, there's like a visual kind of cadence that happens when a lot of people go to the polls. A lot of people, I don't think, actually sit and watch politics and look at the policy level issues. And so I think now people are starting to wake up because we've had disaster after disaster, and women are going to go, hey, is my kid being forced to wear a mask at school? Who's responsible for that? Is my kid going to be vaccinated at school? Are they going to be forced to do that? Who's responsible for that? I think that there is going to be a huge turnaround in 2024.
Yeah, what do you do when the left's biggest argument against Trump is he talks about grabbing women, when those on the other side of the aisle are enabling sexual assault in high schools?
Yep.
I mean, say what you will about Trump, and he had many, he had many issues. I really liked him. He had lots of problems. But I don't remember him enabling any sexual assault. Certainly not in schools. Yet, the way the media covered him, you would think he was the biggest deviant in the world. I mean, remember the pee tapes and Russia and all of that, just garbage. While at this local level, at the local level, leftists and Democrats are putting our kids in danger. That is so, it is, I tell you, folks, listen to what the left says, and then believe the exact opposite. That's just that's an easy way to navigate life.
Yeah, I think that's what makes it hit so close to home. It's like, you know, I'm sure people are probably wondering, why are these national outlets? I mean, the Daily Wire has a person in Loudoun County going to these school board meetings. People are probably wondering, why are these outlets covering this so extensively? It's because this is a tangible example of how these democratic priorities cause problems for everyone.
Yes. And this is the problem. And we got to wrap this segment up. But this is, this is part of the problem with intersectionality and and tribalism. If the individual is the most important thing out there, then yes, you're getting raped is an enormous problem. If it's an issue of tribalism and power politic and Marxist interpretation of power politics, then really, if you get sexually assaulted, it's not that big a deal, especially if you were assaulted by someone who's a who is in a more oppressed minority than you are, in a lower minority group than you are. And that's what's happened to these to these girls who've been sexually assaulted. All right, good segment. So shifting from Loudoun County, which and Tara, you know, our friend here is from Minnesota. And and she just learned this week that it's Loudoun County, not
Ludon.
It is not Ludon County. So in case you're watching, it is not Ludon County. But all that shows is that she's been reading about it, not watching TV, which is a pretty good
Place to be.
Pretty good place to be at. Yeah. So let's shift from that to one of the biggest stories for the last few days, at least the last week, which is the Alec Baldwin shooting on set. Now, I want to make this clear on the front end. This is an accidental shooting from all we can tell. You know, there's video of or there are images of Baldwin after he had vomited on the side on set after he had shot the woman. I my heart breaks for him. As far as that goes, it would be horrible to go on through life, knowing you had accidentally taken another life. However, scripture says, if you live by the sword, you're going to die by the sword. And Baldwin has said some unbelievably horrible things about gun owners and the pro Second Amendment crowd. And now some of those things are coming back to haunt him. And this is this story is a fantastic example of the myopia of the left. They are convinced you look at they look at something like COVID, they say it is a dire through everyone. It's going to kill everyone. Oh, my gosh. We all have to, we all have to be super aware of what's going on with COVID and sacrifice and do all that's possible to stop COVID, when COVID is never going to be stopped. We can't stop the flu. I don't think we're going to be able to stop COVID. So they push on that. But then they don't do simple things, take personal responsibility for things that could actually save lives. One, I'll talk super quickly about a post Baldwin made. I can't remember if it's on TikTok or it was TikTok. Okay. And he made it looks like from from the location in New Mexico. And this was before he shot the woman. And he starts talking about COVID. And he says, in my opinion, this is most certainly a war against this vaccine. This is a war. And when we had a war in this country, you know, like World War II is the ultimate example, you have to sacrifice to fight the war. Simple things, sugar, rubber, you name it. The American people had to sacrifice in an effort to win the war. Now, he's not completely wrong about that. We did have to sacrifice. The problem is that World War II was winnable. I saw someone comment on that post later. This is more like Vietnam, a case of the the American government saying, oh, yes, we can win this war, when it will actually never be over. And that's essentially what Vietnam ended up being. But this is really, this was interesting to me when I saw it, because essentially, you've got, you have Baldwin telling the rest of the country, you've got to sacrifice, you've got to, you've you've got to lay down your own desires, and you've got to do this for the collective good. But it's so interesting that there was an unbelievably simple thing Baldwin could have done just after this, that totally would have saved a life. He was busy lecturing the rest of us on how we can save lives, when it's not clear that most of the guidance given actually saves that many lives. He was lecturing all of us about that, when all he had to do was take the gun when he was handed it, open the slide, look down there, right? I think it was actually a revolver, drop the cylinder out, look, and see if it was empty or not. And he didn't do it. Best we can tell, he didn't do it. If he did do it, then he's really stupid. And it just reminded me of what the left does so often. They are focused on the wrong thing, and they're focused on the wrong people. They are focused on telling the American people how to fight a virus that we're never going to beat. They could save lives instantly. How could they do that? Well, they could change, they change no bail reform in New York City. They just let people out willy nilly. They could we've seen, how many murders have we seen? They could stop killing babies. That would be a really easy one. But just not, but that accepted. They could stop letting people out right after they've been arrested for violent crimes. Then we would see fewer rapes, we would see fewer murders. They could get rid of sanctuary cities. We've seen how many crimes committed by aliens who are shielded by sanctuary cities. They could change policing, policing practices in Chicago. There's no telling how many people, and that's almost all minorities, whose lives they could save. But no, they're not doing that. What are they talking about? 24, they're talking about COVID, they're talking about, we see deaths are dropping yet again, while strangely enough, you have to get vaccinated more and more, it seems. You see Biden out talking about COVID, then walking around shaking people's hands, hugging people without masks on. So it just all registered to me as like complete hypocrisy on the part of the left. Is it Tara, is it weird that Baldwin is out there preaching to everybody who's watching us, saying, you got to sacrifice? And then Baldwin doesn't even take the time to check the gun to see if it's loaded?
Well, I think
Am I just expecting too much?
Well, I think it comes from the the realization that most of these people have a silver spoon in their mouth. It's kind of like, I don't even know. If you hand Baldwin a gun, I don't even think he would even think to check it, because he's literally having everything handed to him. It's rules for thee, not for me. When you're used to consistently having things handed to you, you know, as an A-list celebrity going through this world pandemic and living life kind of probably the same way you always have, there's, there's not really a reason to think critically about the actions you're taking or the steps you're taking. And so I think that it would be almost unfair a little bit to expect that on him. But I will say, it's completely ridiculous with all the stuff we're seeing, how many people saw the red flags, the fact that the cast left the set that day, or certain cast members, you know, there's a lot of people in this chain who should have been responsible, the producers, the director. And so I don't think we can just say that he should have checked it, because probably that wasn't his job. They had the armorer that was inexperienced. Someone hired her. Who was it? And so I think there is responsibility, but I'm not really sure if it's going to be 100% to fall on Baldwin.
Grant, you wrote the piece we ran covering this yesterday. So you've looked at it a lot. As you kind of walked away from that piece, having listened to what Baldwin said, did you feel like, well, what did you feel like when you walked away from that piece?
Well, it's interesting, because we had a pretty long discussion in the newsroom about whether we were going to run the piece, because there were some, some felt that maybe it wasn't fair to say, okay, he's made this claim about COVID. That's unrelated to the fact that he accidentally shot someone. My argument was, and this is
That's true, but that's not the point we're making.
What I wrote in the piece, and the way that I kind of angled it, is that, yes, it's separate. The fact that he made that speech isn't the reason that he accidentally shot someone. But it's, it's a bigger picture thing to me. It's that, it's that the left, like you said, is so focused on like this COVID thing. And I don't know why at this point, like, the only, the only thing that I can guess is that it's because of control, it's because of power. I mean, I don't, they're just so focused on it. And like you said, there's no like evidence to say, if you all get vaccinated, then we're going to save so many lives. They claim that that evidence is out there, and probably the vaccine saves a good amount of lives.
Yeah, I think it does.
It doesn't save all lives. It's not going to stop the pandemic. He said it's going to end the war. It's not going to do that.
Yeah. And we don't know all the repercussions yet either. That's, and I mean, we ran a piece, you put the piece together yesterday with the FDA Advisory Committee, talking about whether or not we should give it to kids. And one of the people on the committee said, look, let's just face facts. We're not going to know that we're not going to know the side effects till we release it.
Yeah. And and even you and I were talking in your office today, and we said, hey, this is like emergent emergency approval. But where is the emergency when you have little kids with COVID? It's like, there's like, not many kids passing away from COVID. It just doesn't make sense. There's so many inconsistencies. And and one thing, too, just just on the Baldwin stuff itself, is that because it's Alex Baldwin, he's going to be able to survive this. He's going to have to ride out the rocky waves if he's not charged with involuntary manslaughter, which I definitely think could be on the table. If he rides this all through and doesn't, and kind of gets out scot free, in a year or so, the media is going to hail him as a hero, because he's going to be able to be an advocate for gun safety.
I know how dangerous guns are. Oh, that's I hadn't thought about that. That's a great point.
So it's like, he's probably going to come out looking pretty good from all of this. And that's just the sad reality of it.
Yeah, it's, it's, none of this is funny. It is remarkable, though, had you had a somebody on there who was pro-gun and who had done a lot of firearms training. I mean, you wouldn't, I you would not be able to get me to point a weapon at somebody unless I had straight up checked it myself. But you know, when you, when you say the things about weapons that Baldwin said, and take the stances he took, you know, he placed himself in a world where he was never exposed to him, I suspect, except for his likely his armed security. So he didn't know what to do. It's a, yeah, it's a sad thing. But we started this off talking about how you live by the sword, you die by the sword. You know, Baldwin sort of mocked a police officer who had been involved in an accidental, an accidental killing with a gun. What's interesting is that Baldwin and several other celebrities jumped into the No Rifle Association, NORA, N O R A. And back in 2018, they sent a letter to the NRA Executive Vice President Wayne LaPierre, saying that the whole world sees that the NRA and that LaPierre have blood on their hands. Live by the sword, you die by the sword, Alec. It's very sad, but now the world sees that you have blood on your hands. It's a good reminder for us to think carefully about what we say, and that truly, if you live by the sword, you are going to die by the sword.
I think to me, that's, that's actually related to the whole COVID point, too, because it's like this, this thing that the left has constructed in their mind. It's like, there's this hypothetical thing that could happen, like, everyone gets the vaccine, and like, maybe it will stop the virus, but it probably won't. And it's the same with the gun manufacturers. It's like, they didn't actively shoot people. They're not directly responsible. They should be held responsible. Or with COVID, Trump should be held responsible, because he actually, he didn't kill people, but he allowed the virus to exist. So that killed people. Meanwhile, they don't know how to literally not kill people. It's like this hypothetical versus literal thing. And they spend so much time on the hypothetical part that they they don't spend time on actually doing things that could literally save people.
Yeah, it's because we're the plebs. We're, we're the plebeians. They don't, you know, they don't really have that much to do with us. Who cares what they do? We'll tell them what to do. We'll live our lives behind our, our nice fences and with our security. Anyway, speaking about of fences and security, and guns, crazy thing, Matt Gaetz, apparently, there was a hitman or an alleged hitman, or somebody claiming to be a hitman, something like that, out for Matt Gaetz. We now looks like we know who the person is. And it is truly delicious. Tara, tell us about it.
So the first thing I want to do is preface this with the fact that we, this is an alleged report. The only person or group of people who have come out and said what we're going to be talking about is Fox News. So just get that clear. We don't have any confirmation beyond what Fox has said. However, what Fox is saying is very juicy. So the the man responsible for going after Matt Gaetz is Eugene Huesman, and he reportedly worked on Ellen DeGeneres, Late Night with Coen O'Brien, and get this, CNN. So he worked as a cameraman for them, and even was nominated for an Emmy for his work in the field.
Emmy nominated hitman.
Emmy nominated hitman. I mean, if he ever goes to prison, he's going to have quite, quite the resume, I guess you could say. And so there's not really been that much coverage on this. I think Politico's headline today was California man arrested in Matt Gaetz threat. And it's like, really? California man? I feel like that's not the thing that I would be seeing, because if the roles were reversed, and this was a Fox News cameraman going after AOC.
Oh, can you imagine?
It would lose their minds. We'd probably get more staged photo shoots, like at the border crying. It would just be this whole entire nightmare. And so I guess my, like, the first question we have on this, considering that this guy was so involved in liberal media, is, is what do you guys think would happen if this were at Fox? And more importantly, why is no one talking about this guy's alleged connections?
What do you say, Grant?
Well, the establishment media is all in cahoots with one another. They like CNN, NBC, sure, they're competing against each other, but they they like each other. They agree with the basic premises that each network says. And so if if this
Destroy Trump, flyover countries, ridiculous bitter clingers.
Exactly. So this person works at CNN. You're not going to see NBC, or MSNBC, or ABC, or CBS, or whatever establishment news outlet, they're not going to say, like, wow, this guy, he worked for CNN, he's probably a leftist, and now he's threatening to kill a Republican representative. You're not going to see them report on that, because that's essentially attacking people who agree with them. And they don't want to do that. So that's why you see Fox News reporting on it. I saw the post millennial, like, basically copy Fox News article or retweet or whatever they did. So you're seeing these conservative sites start to cover it. We wrote a story about it. But you're not seeing the establishment media, because they don't want to demonize people who are on the same side as the aisle as they are. To answer your question about Fox, I can't imagine what the coverage would be like if a Fox News cameraman, anyone who ever worked in any capacity for Fox News. I mean, it would be, not only would it be that guy is terrible, it would be every Republican is that guy. Every Republican wants to kill left.
Yeah. AG Garland would send in the FBI to investigate.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he'd have to send in SWAT teams. I mean, they'll send the FBI after, after parents at school board meetings. There's no telling what he would do with this. But if you guys remember when Gabby Giffords was shot by just a psychopath, she's a Democratic rep, she was shot by an absolute psychopath, nut job. It was not political at all. And the media after that, I mean, they hammered Republicans for using phrases like, yeah, we're targeting this county. We're targeting this district. If they, they showed graphics that Republican strategists had used that showed like target symbols on certain parts of the country. And, and, and it was all political. When none of it was political, the guy was a nut. He was a psychopath. Had this been a Fox cameraman, the headlines would be unbelievable. And then the follow up the next day would be spectacular. Can, can the conservative movement be rescued from, from violent would be murderers? Is the conservative, is the Republican Party beyond redemption? You know, because this guy worked at Fox, and obviously, everyone else who works at Fox wants to kill AOC too.
Exactly.
It would be this nonstop cavalcade of this lunacy, which, okay, fine, if you want to do that, fine. But do it when the cameraman is also from Which, okay, fine. If you want to do that, fine, but do it when the cameraman is also from CNN or from Ellen or from Conan. I hate to do this from Conan. I like Conan. But yeah, and look, we have no idea what the guy's political affiliation is. He's going after Matt Gaetz, probably not, it's reasonable to think he's not a Republican. But, but that doesn't matter. What his actual political affiliation is, doesn't matter because of the way the media spins it. Again, the guy who shot Gabby Giffords, a nut job, no politics at all, no politics at all. But they made it political. We don't know if this is political or not, feels like it is, but, but that doesn't matter. What's good for the goose should be good for the gander, but it's not because you are correct. The, the establishment media is in cahoots. They cahoot with each other.
Yeah, I would even go so far as to say that I would be fine if they didn't make it political, if it weren't for these other cases. If they just want to say California man.
Just be consistent.
California man threatens, you know, Republican representative. That's okay. But the problem is that they've created a standard about what they do and the other side doesn't. So then you have to do the same thing. If you want to cover it without politics both ways, great, do that. But they won't do that. It's only one, like you said, one way for one group and a different way for another group.
Yeah. And, and one of the things that this guy said, he said, I'll put a bullet in you and one of your expletive kids too. And so this guy is clearly unhinged and, and time and time again, we see these different examples of extremist people going into churches. Like the, the church shooter, then we see Islamist extremists and just these, you know, school shootings. So we see these kinds of things time and time again. And Jordan Peterson has gone into a lot of detail about what leads people to take these kind of dire actions. And, and I was talking with Josh today and I, and I brought up the point that when we have a society or kind of a political leftist ideology that focuses on the idea that there's these different oppression hierarchies and that white men are at the very top of it and that they're the worst people in society. They have no standing. They have no right to speak on any issues whatsoever. There's this immediate, on, this immediate drawback on the value that young white men have within society. And we just focus on who we are on paper, not who we are as individuals. And I think it's really interesting that we're kind of categorizing this guy as a leftist when these ideologies create this sort of feedback loop where he's listening to the same people probably who are going after Matt Gaetz. And so it's, it's.
So he's told he's useless and he's evil and he's the pinnacle of horribleness because he's a white male.
And so these people or these shooters oftentimes are just latching on to these movements or ideas because it's giving them some, some sense of purpose. And we talk about that a lot at Western Journal about what is our mission? Our mission is a Christian mission focusing on biblical worldview. And so my question for you guys is beyond the left itself, because the left hates any form of Christianity, religion whatsoever. What do you think is contributing most to this lost feeling that so many people have in society?
That's a good question.
I think that.
Grant, you're very lost in society.
I think that it's honestly, I mean, it's going to sound cheesy. It's a lack of biblical principles or a turn away from biblical principles. If you look at our country today, we, the people who are in leadership do not have the same Christ-centered values that were a part of our country, you know, just a couple decades ago, maybe not even that long. But even in the time I've been alive, I'm 23 years old, in the time I've been alive, I've been able to see from when I was a kid, I feel like there were these Christian values that we held to. And not everyone has always been a Christian, obviously. There are other religions, but there are these, these moral, like societal values that we hold, most of which, whether people want to admit it or not, are centered in Christian beliefs. And those sort of values, I think, are not held by everyone anymore. They're only held by not, I wouldn't say only Republicans, they're only held by Republicans and some Democrats, but not nearly as many Democrats as it used to be. And so I think there's a growing, we talked about the difference between leftists and liberals. I think that there is a growing population of leftists who don't believe in those values. And there is a shrinking population of liberals who do believe in those values. And so that I think is the main thing that's causing a lot of these issues that we're seeing.
Yeah, that's, that's good, Grant. I agree. And we're, we're running over a little bit. This could be such a great long discussion, but I'll, I'll try to answer it quickly. And I'll answer it the way Jordan would answer it and has answered it. Jordan Peterson has. I agree with what you're saying, Tara. I think that, I think the reason you see more white male mass shooters, when you pull gang violence and all that trash out of it, when the kind of thing you think of, when you really think of mass shooting, the reason you see more white males is that they essentially, you're right, they've been told that they're at the top of an oppression hierarchy and that there's essentially nothing good they've, they can do, that masculinity is toxic. But they've also been infected with sort of a postmodern nihilism, this idea that it's, it's a complete lack of Christian, a complete lack of values in general. Postmodernism told us that, that there is no truth. There really isn't truth. So just kind of do what your appetites drive you to do. The problem is your appetites can't be sated. There's not enough you can do to satisfy yourself. There is that God-shaped hole and you can't fill them with that. And so what happens is you have people who don't have any faith and they're trying to figure out the significance of life, but life's really hard. And if you don't have faith, it's unbearably hard. And so they descend into nihilism and believing that life is pointless. It's better to not live than to experience. Yeah, there's some joy in it, but there's an awful lot of pain too. So why not not live? And then they, they begin to want to inflict pain on others because of the, because of the pain they've experienced. And then they kill themselves at the end of it because why is life worth living? And I think the reason you see that with whites, but you don't see it with a lot of blacks, is that for better or worse, black Americans are still involved in the civil rights fight that they've been involved with for a long time, but especially since the 50s and 60s. They haven't arrived yet. At least if you ask, I think most black people, they've said, you know, we haven't arrived yet. Whereas whites pretty much have arrived. I mean, we're, we're at Francis Fukuyama said, we're at the, we're at the end of history. History's over. This is just kind of it. There's nothing left to fight for or against. And so I think that's what hollows these people out and turns them into mass shooters. It's, yeah, it's, it's absolutely, absolutely horrible. And again, if you're listening to Jordan, like, you know, Nietzsche warned about this, Dostoevsky warned about this. I think Jung was probably warning about this, that look, if you ditch religion, put Christianity off to the side, if you just ditch religion in general, something is going to come in to take its place. And that something can be very, very nasty. And what happens, and we really are, we'll finish here in just a second, but truly what has happened is that you've got a lot of people who are essentially atheistic or anti-theistic. And so if you don't have faith driving you, what happens is that the level of your life that should be faith collapses into politics. Cause politics is sort of the next thing that unites us. And then you give politics, you dedicate to politics, the religious fervor that should be dedicated to your faith. And then that's where you have a cameraman allegedly coming in and saying, I'm going to kill Matt Gaetz and one of his kids. You can't do that politically. That's something you say religiously. I'm going to go take life because, because essentially the impetus of God wants me to. And so if you don't have faith, that, if you don't have faith, that religious part of you collapses into the political part. And then you began, begin treating politics like religion. And that's so unbelievably dangerous. That's what's unbelievably dangerous about political Islam, because it takes faith and politics and combines them. And politics is very nasty on its own. And if you don't have faith to restrain it, that's dangerous. If you've got faith fueling it, that's unbelievably dangerous. That's where horrible, horrible things happen. So anyway, we went long. Sorry about that, folks. That's good. That's good. Tara, thank you. Grant, thank you. That's it for us on WJ Live. Remember, we're here every Monday, Wednesday and Friday at 5:00 PM Eastern, 2:00 PM Pacific, where we talk about the events of the day, what people are talking about out there online. Be sure to, if you're watching us on YouTube, be sure to click the subscribe button. After that, click the little bell that pops up. That's going to make sure you get to see us, even if they shadow ban us, you'll still get to see us. Additionally, if you'd like to support us directly, you can go to westernjournal.com/join. That's westernjournal.com/join. I say to you with as much fervor as I can muster, there has never been a better day to support Christian conservative journalism like that practiced at the Western Journal than today. They are trying to silence us. Big tech is trying to silence us. They hate us. They want us to go under. They want to destroy us. They view us as a threat. There has never been a better day to support the Western Journal, but please only do it if you feel led to. If you go to westernjournal.com/join, there are a couple of ways there that you can help support us and support the mission that we are on to drive positive cultural change through media. All right. That's it for us today. We will see you again on Friday. In the meantime, have a great evening and a great Thursday. Thanks.